Okay, welcome to the Manhattan City Commission Work Session for Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is to discuss potential stormwater policy for establishing a fee in lieu of detention systems in certain areas of the city. And I guess, Mariah, you'll take it from there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. We do have two, Public Works has two items for you tonight. One is a follow-up, the fee in lieu discussion that we had last summer. We talked then about coming back and developing a formal policy, and this is step two in that. Want to give you an update, kind of where we're at, and then also talk about July and at the end of the year, actually developing a policy and updating it by the end of the year. So this is an update to kind of give you an idea of where we stand as of today, get your input on if we're heading in the right path, and then we'll be back in July at that mid-year budget session to come back with a formal draft policy. The other item is a stormwater protection plan, and that's part of our EPA permit that we get every year that we file through KDHE and the EPA. Bill Heatherman, our stormwater compliance engineer, will be presenting on that. This will be his first time presenting to the group, so please be nice to him. Bill's been our great employee. We've had him for about a year, and stormwater engineers are hard to find, so pull out the kid gloves, if you would, please. I appreciate that. With that, I'll get started. Fee and lieu discussion. So the agenda, again, review that 2020 decision that we made back in about April or May of last year on that M2 apartment at Carney in North Manhattan. Review our methodology for how we established our fee. We went through it back then, very complex. You know, there's a way that we can identify how much water runs off and how much per cubic foot that should be, mathematical computation, but it's pretty complex. Then, one of the things we heard last April and May was that that fee seemed low, and it seemed low to staff, too. It was about a dollar per additional square foot of runoff. And so, in most cases, you're going to be looking at a fee of $6,000 to $7,000. Not a real big number when you consider what it costs to put underground detention in the ground. Not only design, installation, maintenance, all of those things, lifecycle costs. So, we have been looking at some other cities, and some other cities do like a flat surcharge fee or some sort of a flat fee. And probably in July, we'll come back with kind of some recommendations of what that would be, if that's the route that you choose to go down tonight. Then again, the goal is to get direction on a preferred method, finalize that methodology, and present a final form at mid-year budget session for adoption by the end of the year, and it would kick in in 2022. Again, the downtown east and west watersheds. The blue is the east watershed, and that actually drains, that's everything that drains to Pretty Ditch. The green is everything that drains down Little Kitten and then into Wildcat Creek. Pretty large area town, it's got quite a bit of relief to it until you get to the outfall. That's when it gets extremely flat, and it's hard to detain water because you don't have that elevation. Again, how large this watershed is, this is Kimball Avenue right here. So it actually includes areas north of Kimball, all the way up to the purebred beef area. So it's a very large watershed. We do have some detention in the area. NBAF is overdetained, KDA is overdetained, which means they actually generate less water than what it would be if it was a national prairie or prior to construction. So there are areas that are overdetained. Unfortunately, a lot of this area was built up prior to the detention policy of the 2000s and the swamp of the 90s. So, a lot of this area was really built prior to those adoptions of those ordinances, so going back and trying to detain now is pretty, pretty hard to do.
Talk about, talk about overdetained, again?
So there are some places, NBAF, Kansas Department of Ag, the new Stormont Vale area, those places are overdetained, which means they retain more water after construction than prior to construction.
Okay.
There are a few areas in this watershed that do that. There's just not enough to make up for the ones that have nothing.
Okay. That's not a bad thing.
No, it's, no.
Okay, thank you.
Those are happy days at work, when those come in.
Exactly.
So this is, again, the downtown east, downtown west watershed, and of course, the CIPs that were identified in the 2014 watershed master plan. And just to give you an update, CIP 1 is pretty much completed, a few punchless items to finish. Obviously, the levee and the gate well up here at CIP 2 is a betterment. CIP 3 is under construction. And in CIP 5, we do have started design on it. CIP 5 eventually gets us to 14th and Anderson, where we all know we have significant issues at that intersection with flooding. That's kind of where we are in the downtown watershed. We have moved through about five of the CIPs. So when it comes to zoning of the area, currently about 65% of the area is impervious. It has runoff. Now, with the recent zoning on the impro and the urban core, urban core is the area here in black, you can build property line to property line there. Perfect example is those Manhattan Apartments, M1 and M2, corner to corner paved. That's allowed by zoning. The blue area is the impro area. It's a little bit older, early 2000s. That area, you can go 85% coverage. So again, they're about 65 now. You can go all the way up to 85. So when we had AMAC model this, we had them model, what's it look like if this area builds out to that? What does that do? How does that affect our watershed? This is the, this is the outputs of that model. You can see there's all sorts of areas that they modeled with water, water depths and elevations. The two most important, again, third and Carney, obviously, we know we have a significant flooding issue there. So in an existing 50-year event, the way that that watershed sets today, elevation's about a 10, 10.2. Natural ground surface there is around a 10.05, so it's about five feet of depth. Build out with no detention. So going back to this slide, if we impervious 100% of this, 85% of the blue, no detention, we raise that watershed an inch. That's all we raise it, because this area is so built out already. With the CIPs that are identified in here, the CIP 4, 3 and 2, we're actually lower water surface elevation, about two feet. We go from five feet deep to three feet deep. That's how critical those CIP items are. Again, that's in a 50-year event. Fourth and Bluemont, again, where the roundabout is, we've all seen pictures of stuff floating around the roundabout. Existing is about a 10, 13.8 in a 50-year event. Water surface elevation there is about a 10.09, 10.10. So it's about three and a half to four feet of standing water in a 50-year event in that intersection. Build out with no detention, again, we only raise a half inch, 4/100ths of an inch. So again, that watershed is very built out. There's, even if you paved it from corner to corner, you're not going to generate a lot more runoff. With CIPs, we drop it about a foot seven. So you basically cut your elevation in half. This is just a blow up of that Fourth and Bluemont area. So currently, we've calculated a fee of about a $112 per square foot. And what we've done is we've estimated the total amount of runoff today, figured out what that total amount of runoff would be in the future. Whatever that delta is, we divided by that impervious square footage area. So you get a dollar per square foot, $112 per square foot. That dollar per square, that $112 comes from if we do all of the CIPs identified here. So that $100 million of CIP divided by your impervious area, or divided by your additional runoff, comes to about a buck 12. So in the M2 case, where we had X amount of square feet that was impervious, we went to Y amount of square feet that was pervious, we just multiplied that additional impervious area, multiplied by a buck 12. That came to about $23,000, I think, was their fee. Again, those comments at that time were, that seems low, seems like it should be larger than that, because that was actually quite a, quite a large area that was impervious before. So that amounts as the cost identified, improvements divided by remaining capacity in the system. Now, a typical redevelopment, because again, most redevelopments are, there's something already there. There's a garage there, there's a driveway there, there's a house there. It's already 65% impervious. In a typical development, that additional impervious area would generate a fee of about $6,700. Again, that fee seems relatively small compared to the additional runoff that you're generating. So the question then becomes, for $6,700, do we want to look at additional surcharges? Do we want an additional surcharge for design, installation, maintenance, all of those things that are generated from underground detention? So the next, yes?
Is that based on the 100% impervious thing, or at the 85?
That's based on an average lot that's 65% impervious, which that average watershed is, and then you go to 100%.
200%, okay.
So the next steps, does the commission want to keep looking at a fee in lieu? Staff's perspective is, yeah, we think we should. We think that detention in this watershed is really not the best way, most efficient way, to use dollars to lower water surface profiles. The AMAC modeling effort recommended fee in lieu in the bottom part of the watershed. Again, we'd have to engage AMAC. We'd have to determine where those bottom parts of the watershed are. The fee in lieu method, as we envision it, would be at the city's discretion. So if a development came in, there's flooding issues directly downstream, no, that's probably not a good place for fee in lieu, because we have an existing flooding problem right down the street that we can't, that we have to manage. And it'd be based on the location of that development in the entire watershed. If that development is in an area where detention could make a difference, based on the model, then maybe fee in lieu is not the best solution for that particular development. And then again, with that relatively small fee, would a connection fee, system charge flat fee, or any other tool be something that we should investigate also? And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Just one, I don't know, you could give us a ballpark figure, but say I'm developing something, and the fee in lieu would be $6,700, but what if I was forced to build an underground system? What would that cost me?
I, my speculation would be well over, well over $10,000. I think your design fee as a loan would be over that.
Okay.
I'm not a developer. I can't really answer that question, and I hate to speculate. But my, my guess is you'd have well over $10,000.
Okay, the reason I ask that is, is, you know, if you're in the business of developing something, you know, I wouldn't want to overcharge them, you know, so that, so that our total fee probably shouldn't exceed what it would cost them to do underground.
Correct, correct.
Connection.
Yeah.
But, you know, as I looked at all the material that was presented, it seems to make sense to me to, because we got millions of dollars worth of CIP, and if we could funnel this money into that, I think it would have a much wider impact on the city.
Yes.
Than somebody trying to retrofit a piece of concrete.
Their little postage stamp, yes, yep. And I, I hate to speculate about what fees are, because I'm not in that business, but talking with several developers, they are very interested in a fee in lieu, if for no other reason than maintenance. They don't have to go out there every year, clean them, vacuum them out, take the flush truck out there, clean them. There's that lifecycle cost, too, that you have to somehow put a dollar figure to.
Yeah, that's a good point, because, yeah, the maintenance, that would be our problem with the, with the storm rains and things that get put in. And then, this also would mean like if a development was farther away, and it wasn't all concrete, that we could still require.
Absolutely.
Pond or whatever, you know. But I understand they worked well in some areas, like over by the health department, and of course, the recent Seaco Park containment ponds that were put in, but there was plenty of space there to do it. But retrofitting just seems to be impossible.
And those, those examples are in that upper part of that watershed. They're not way down at the bottom where detention starts getting a little bit more dicey, because you may detain water for when that big wave comes down, and then you have matching waves.
All right.
Mike and Hattlesell here. My concern with the, trying to do some of that onsite retention is, is the problem that we heard about before was they flooded the first floor of his, was it 12B, I think it was, or something?
One of them down there.
Yeah, one of them there, the, this bright idea of trying to detain it onsite in the building ended up kind of flooding the first floor or something. And so, obviously, we can't require something that's, and I don't know what would have been the reason that that happened, but, yeah, I would much rather have them pay us some money, help us pay for the bigger projects, because if we require stuff that's, that may or may not be actually functional when push comes to shove.
Yeah.
That's, that's my concern about.
And it's probably money wasted, because we're not gaining the benefits of lowering those water surface profiles, and they're not gaining anything by building detention that's just not, not working.
This is Commissioner Reddy. I, I like this proposal. I wanted to know what the developers thought when you went out and spoke with them, since they're the ones who are doing all of this. I like it because I feel it gives that, those 14 programs, or the 14 projects that we have.
Yeah.
A better way to handle them.
Advance those, yeah.
And also give you a way to plan how to do each of those, each of those projects, because when it rains, it rains real quickly, and we have those floods happen, and then it's too late until the next one. And I don't understand the concept of 50-year, 100-year, it's, when it's there, it's there. That's it, you have to take care of it. Instead of piecemealing each of it and having them do their own little detention ponds and such, this makes better, more sense to me. What feedback did you have from other developers in our community? I understand about other cities that are probably already doing it, but for local developers, what did you?
The feedback that I've gotten, I've only talked to two or three of them to date. If, if we move forward, I'm going to engage them a little bit more and kind of get their ideas on it. The feedback's been positive, because I think that they see it as not only an overall net savings, but there's also a savings of time. They don't have a month of designing, implementing, installing an underground detention system. They can be building a building, which is, at the end of the day, is what they want to do. That's what they specialize in.
And I think it just gives us more control on how to handle all of them as we try to upgrade each of those systems. And, you know, like you said, there isn't that much green space anywhere anymore.
No.
We have a lot of old infrastructure in place that we need to try to take.
Old and undersized, yep. Yeah, you're spot on.
So I, I like the idea and the proposal that's in front of us, and just go back and see what the developers think of it as well, and modify it so that we are addressing their concerns. But I think in a way, they feel more positive about this.
Yeah.
Because we're taking control of it in a way.
I mean, obviously, the devil's in the details with, with whatever that flat surcharge fee would be, and, and we don't even know what that would be yet. You know, we can speculate, but we don't know. Between now and July, we'll come up with whatever that recommendation is.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Morris, I, I, my, my main concern is the city's cost for remediating the stormwater. And these are huge projects, as evidenced by your list and the total cost of them.
They're massive.
And the way we're doing it now, and I'm, is that we require the developer to not discharge any more stormwater than, than the site when it's empty.
Well, not when it's empty, to the development.
When the development's complete.
Yeah.
And, well, what are we talking about here? And, but anyway, I don't want the burden to fall on the general fund and the population.
Agreed.
I want there to be a trade-off for what it would cost. So I don't know, because I don't know how to bury a water tank.
Yes.
Store water that will eventually discharge, obviously. But I just also want to be careful that we don't give the farm away here, and, because we can't afford the list we've got now, and it's going to take us years to accomplish it. And we have citizens complaining about taxes now. I want to make progress on stormwater.
As do we, yes.
We have a history, a long history, of citizens being impacted by it.
Especially in this watershed.
Yeah, and we fix one thing, and some, and another person that's never had stormwater before ends up with a flooded basement. And so it's that touchy, I guess.
Yeah.
And, but I do have a concern, and I, I don't know how to figure costs from one to the other. I just can't figure out how much it costs to bury a tank versus how much it would cost this fee in lieu of. But I want to make sure that we don't just do the bare minimum of charging, because we want to be nice.
Yeah.
We have to think about our finances, too.
Yeah.
And I wanted to talk about, ask about, oh, I, I do have concerns about who's going to be making exceptions to the, any of these rules, like.
The way we envision it is during the planning process, we would make a recommendation based on modeling, and then at the end of the day, it would be your, your five.
We won't know how you figured anything.
Well.
I mean, calculate, that's what all of this is, is a calculation.
To some extent, yes.
That engineers do.
At the end of the day, yeah, staff is going to make a recommendation to you, and then you're going to may be able to make that decision.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, I watch what happens with the board of zoning appeals, and they don't meet many situations that they don't approve. And I'm not interested in making a lot of exceptions for this situation, because stormwater is such a huge issue in the community.
Yes.
So I don't know how to, I, I want that registered on your list of things, and.
Yeah.
You can come back when you get something more and reassure me that I shouldn't worry about that.
Our envision is it's at our discretion.
Yeah, I know.
At the end of the day, you five can say, nope, modeling says this, and we think that it's going to be better for you to, to detain than it is for us to go build CIPs.
I'm telling you, we will not know, as this group is, we are not engineers. We don't know, and we rely upon you.
Yes.
So I just want to be sure that we, you, you, city administration staff, are looking after the finances that we will end up chasing down. I, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
No, and that's a great point, that, you know, we have a, a big delta out there that we have to try to tackle.
And I know you, as an engineer, rely upon rules and calculations, but I also know.
The laws of physics, yes.
You can be persuaded to, anyway, just saying, won't be the first time. So even we have been influenced.
I think more people would say I'm harder to sway than I am, too.
Just say, okay. And so, we would be doing that in all of these watersheds?
Well, right now, we're just proposing the downtown watershed.
Downtown.
We have not looked at Wildcat Creek. We have not looked at Little Kitten. We're focusing on where the majority of that flooding issue is and where the majority of that development is.
So that's downtown and east watershed?
East and west.
East and west?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
These two watersheds?
Yeah.
Could you look out at other watersheds? Possibly. But let's get a policy, let's establish it, let's see how it works.
We know it will spread. I mean.
Maybe. The, the issue with the other watersheds is we don't have a master plan with them. We haven't done a master plan to look at what those projects would be, so we don't know what that delta cost is.
You're asking for, so this fee is relatively small, oh, compared to the cost of design, installation, and maintenance?
Correct, yes.
And, okay, so I can go to a, what kind of a person, a professional digs a hole for a water retention, detention basin?
An excavation company.
Excavation. So I can contact an excavation company and ask them how much it would cost?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
I can give you a whole list of.
I want something instead of, we don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It isn't, it isn't that we don't know. It's hard for us to speculate.
Well, it's harder for us, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Again, while, while we're going to come back in July with some recommendations.
I think this is a, I'm not interested in giving anything away.
As are we, yes.
And I, so this seems to be a kind of a, I'm going to call it a mathematical.
Absolutely, yes.
Approach.
Yes.
Which is a little different than the current one, so, all right, thank you.
Everything, everything looks great. I have a question about the maintenance, just in long-term. So let's, those other CIP projects you talked about, the 14 of them or however many, typically, what, I mean, there's going to always be maintenance.
Absolutely, yes.
And so, this is a kind of a fixed amount, and this isn't going to cover the maintenance indefinitely, but it just puts a dent in that obligation that we have to.
In our calculations for that $112, we did consider a lifecycle cost for all of our infrastructure. So there is a, a fee per year that we included for that maintenance cost, of course. It's very low in the first couple of years, and it's very high in the out years. But yeah, there's a.
Yeah, that, that's good to know. So.
Yes.
30 years from now, or whatever, there should be maintained through that process, and there'll be payment during that period of time to keep things up.
Just, and everybody's still going to pay their monthly stormwater fee, too.
Absolutely.
And so, it's not like this is a one-shot deal, and I'm never on the hook for any other stormwater.
Yes.
They're going to get socked every month, just like the rest of us, for, for the stormwater.
In theory, they'd pay more, because there's more impervious area.
Yes. So, that's, that's where some of our, maintenance of our projects, obviously, comes from.
Generates revenue for maintenance every year. Yeah, we have a line item every year that we generate for maintenance.
And we're not going to try to hit them up every year for some kind of an additional maintenance.
An additional.
Be a one-shot deal upfront, and then after that, just pay your stormwater fees.
We would take those dollars, put them in an escrow account, or put them into an account that we could use for these CIPs. Correct.
Okay, all right.
You know, I do have another question.
Yes.
Most of the area in the downtown and east and west are fully developed.
Very much so.
And so, most of it is redevelopment in some way.
Yep.
Something comes out, something goes in, is built. And places like Northview or, that have had flooding problems, this isn't a solution for those, those areas?
Well, again, you'd have to have a master plan with identified CIPs. I would guess in that area, probably not, because you're so close to the Blue River.
Yeah, that's what I think, but I don't read minds, but I, I just, I know that we, as we have new subdivisions come online, we have a flood plain, and we require them to build higher than the flood plain, and I just want to be sure that they aren't buying us out of.
No, uh-uh.
Our standards.
No.
And that future residents will, I mean, this area is protected by the levee.
Correct.
In my mind, but those other areas aren't.
Correct. And that's what this slide apparently did a poor job of explaining.
It's just hard to read, you know, my.
If you didn't detain one more drop of water in this watershed, you would raise the water surface elevation an inch. That's it.
But it's going to be 25 years before we get all of this list done to reach the point that we raise it an inch, a half an inch, right? I mean, when are we going to get all the?
Well, we're under design on.
Well, we have accomplished everything.
We're under design on two and three. As soon as the levee's done, we're going to move forward with those.
I'm just saying, I.
I, I agree, it will be, it will take a while.
10, 20 years, it's going to be 20. It's not going to be 10, probably. Okay.
Can I answer any other questions?
Okay.
We'll be back in, we'll be back in July then, and we'll give you some more recommendations, okay?
Yeah, it sounds like, you know, what, what the group is interested in is, you know, you're either going to have a detention system or a fee, and the fee should be close to what it costs to do the detention.
Plus maintenance, installation, design.
So that we maximize the CIP, you know, input. And then, the other, the other point is, you know, you're going to have the discretion to look at each development to get the biggest bang for the buck.
Absolutely.
Detention work better or CIP project?
And that discretion is ours.
Yes, and it sounds like in, in these built-up areas, clearly leaning towards the CIP is probably better.
Yep, that's, you're spot on there.
Is that pretty much what you need?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brian, this is Commissioner Reddy. Just one more question. Do we get grants for these types of projects, or is it just completely on, on city and developers?
The only grants that we've got in this watershed specifically related to stormwater is the Pretty Ditch Grants, and those were through beautification, through making those roadside areas more attractive.
Not pipes and stuff, then? Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Not pipes and stuff, then, okay, sounds good, thank you.
Commissioner Ron Fear, obviously, uh, infrastructure grants, uh, are something we've worked on. You know, since I've been assistant city manager, Congress has promised to come with a comprehensive infrastructure program. We're still waiting on that, so, uh, and it's, it's across all forms of infrastructure, but in, in, in character, stormwater is a relatively, or in age, stormwater's a relatively new piece of infrastructure as, because you had older systems where those were combined with sanitary sewer. Uh, on the, especially east of the Mississippi River and some places south where you have combined systems, so. Those are probably ones that they, there are more grants for because they want to separate those systems because it's expensive treating that stormwater. You have to build bigger plants and, uh, ways of treating that, so. We have a lot of older infrastructure in the traditional water and sanitary sewer than you do stormwater, so. Uh, the feds have been good about creating more regulations, uh, for us to abide by with stormwater quality. But not so much in helping us with funding. We have funding programs, the low-interest loan programs for both sanitary sewer and water. But we don't have any for, for storms, stormwater, so. We're hoping that, uh, there'll be some measures coming forward that, uh, will help us make a backlog and it doesn't force local units to come up with their own funding scenarios, which is what we've had to do for. We were one of the first in the state to do a stormwater fee back in the early nineties. Yep, so, okay, I'm off my horse.
Okay, I wanted to mention, we had open public comments, you know, online, we didn't receive any on any of the items tonight for anyone listening out there. So we can move on to the second item on the agenda, which is stormwater pollution prevention four-year plan review.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. Um, so we have, uh, had for about two decades a stormwater quality program. And this is a good transition, so, you know, historically, when we talked about stormwater, it was mostly flooding or nuisance. But there's also a pollution prevention aspect to, uh, managing our stormwater and what it really gets to is treasuring our creeks and rivers and understanding that as a natural resource and the impacts that we have, so. We are getting ready to submit our next stormwater management plan and the details of that plan were included in your packet. But we just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of hit the high points of what our stormwater program does and answer any questions that you may have. So the regulations that we fall under that, that invite us as a city and sixty-four other cities, counties and KDOT districts is under the Clean Water Act and it's specifically called the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It's the same program that our wastewater treatment plant gets a permit for, it's the same that a processing plant that might discharge to the rivers get, but it's a different type of permit because in this case, we're actually regulating all of our stormwater pipes and how they outfall. And obviously, we don't have a lot of control over what goes in them, so. Uh, unlike a meat processing plant where we could take samples and adjust things, we have to work with people and try to influence decisions that our citizens make and influence decisions that our businesses make, so. So that was a little background and that's actually a picture of Wildcat Creek that we took while we were doing stormwater sampling. And the programs that we have in place, there's really six major program areas under our permit. Public engage, public education, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, that one's a mouthful. Construction site runoff control, post-construction development redevelopment controls and then what they call good housekeeping in our own operations. We also have two extra provisions in our permit. If you have a creek or major water body that has a particular state-listed pollution issue, then they tack on some extra duties that are called TMDL because of a strange acronym. Uh, we do have for the Kansas River and Wildcat Creek, both of those are listed for nutrients and sediments. So we commit ourselves to a few extra duties in our permit. And then we also do water quality sampling. We actually go out and get four grab samples a year from four locations. Three on Wildcat Creek and one on the Kansas River. And we submit those for some of the standard stormwater pollutants like nutrients, bacteria and total suspended solids. When the permit writers at EPA first started the municipal programs in the mid-nineties, they knew that without the, um, interest and awareness of the public, that we weren't going to get anywhere, so the first two of the six programs are, are about the public, public involvement and public engagement. Under public involvement, we have, um, a hotline in our reporting system through the report-it so people can let us know when they see things that concern them. We have a pretty robust web and social media presence. Communications folks do a great job of adding in some stormwater, uh, protection tips and messages through the year. And we are available to meet with small groups, um, 4H, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, your church club. Uh, if you let us know that you have some kind of gathering that meets regularly and would like to have a speaker's topic, uh, you can let us know and we will come, or at least in the era of COVID, we'll join you on Zoom and hope that we can come in person later. And we are also building our relationships with community organizations and school, including the Manhattan Public Schools, Friends of the Caw, other organizations that are already committed. This is really our avenue to be a partner with other groups. In terms of public engagement, we will have a public forum this year to invite more, uh, in-depth participation. The activities that we already do in our stream, stream cleanups or park cleanups count. And this particular permit cycle makes a really heavy emphasis on outreach to the public as pet owners and what we're doing, you know, what they do to kind of keep, keep the environment clean.
Bill, this is Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I just have a couple of questions. I was looking at your, um, your plan.
Yes.
So you mentioned, um, the report-it program. I, I don't know if it was on the city manager's, uh, report or where. I wanted to have an update on if the report-it program, how well it's working or if it's not working because that's traditionally based on if you have a phone. And I don't know if, if we're seeing that as successful, has it declined? I don't know if you have any information about the report-it program.
Um, it's been successful for us in stormwater, at least as far as getting the word, but I don't know bigger picture.
I can, uh, while we're presenting, I could look up some of the year-end stats on reported if that's helpful, just to give you an idea of number of users, how many reports.
And the other piece to that is, I saw in the, uh, in the one C, I guess, on the plan that we were going to try to phase out the telephone hotline. And I think it's still important to have some kind of a component for phones. What we noticed during this vaccine phase phasing in is that a lot of people don't have access to technology and they still need a, an in-person contact or a regular landline contact or a phone contact because they're not on all of those media apps. So I just wanted to make sure if we're talking about, uh, stormwater and such, some of the people that don't have the means or the know-how may still need some, um, what we would consider antiquated ways of communicating, like a phone line. So I just wanted to see if there was any data for that or if, if there's a reason we're phasing it out because nobody's calling or if it's not useful.
So I think that's a good point, so I, as far as phasing out the hotline, it was really in lieu of having a separate dedicated number.
Okay.
So we'll still publicize, um, Public Works' number for contact. It's just that we weren't getting but maybe one or two calls a year using that dedicated line.
And people may just not know about it, that's where your.
Sure.
Your engagement that you're talking about probably comes in, because I didn't know about it until we, we started having this discussion.
Yeah, we will always have a phone number associated with the program that is publicized, um, in addition to the computer.
Sounds good, thank you.
Uh, the, these are just some examples of some of the outreach activities. And on the right-hand side in particular, the Boys and Girls Club contacted us about a year and a half ago, these are twenty nineteen photos. Uh, they wanted to do a stream cleanup and so we helped arrange a spot and got the kids out and they found really big frogs and turtles and they had a good time. So obviously COVID has interrupted the normal way we would do public education, although we did some special social media around Earth Day. Um, and we're hoping that in time, we can get back to doing it the way we like to do it. So removing pollution is the core of the program. And so two of these program areas really get to kind of what you might think of as the traditional goal of a city program. The illicit discharge detection elimination, that's what it means, is our job is to find situations that are adverse to the quality of the water and do something about it. Uh, that may be referrals from codes about nuisance issues, it may be calls that we get that somebody's dumping concrete down the storm drain or old motor oil. You don't see that as much as you used to, but it, it's a real issue. It may be being more aggressive about catching cross-connections where every once in a while, a plumber got lazy and just brought the sanitary out to the nearest pipe they could find. And I've seen those in the field, not here, but, uh, those kinds of things just take an ongoing effort to find and correct. A lot of times, the correction is through education or cooperative work with the property owner. We had one last year where it was a unique situation, but in the end, it kind of fell between a couple of different regulatory programs. Rather than get too hung up on it, we just sat down and figured it out and, uh, were able to prevent some discharges. We also go out during dry weather and actually do an active inspection of our outfalls just to see if there's any flow when there shouldn't be or any evidence of contaminants. And then the program says that we're not supposed to just talk the talk, we need to walk the walk in our own operations. And so one entire program area is called good, good housekeeping and municipal operations. So that means everything from the street sweeping and inlet inspections and cleanings that we do uh, to making sure that, like within parks or Public Works Maintenance, that we're applying pesticides correctly. Uh, employee training and maintaining good asset maps so that when we have an issue, we can actually respond to it efficiently. And so this is just a few example and, you know, you can see the Styrofoam cup sitting there at the bottom of the culvert, it's, uh, you know, it's an ongoing effort to try to keep our rivers and lakes clean. Construction and development is a particularly high-impact function, so much so that two of the six program areas relate to it. Under construction, that's really erosion and sediment controls, so when you drive by a construction site and you see the silt fence up, um, that's all driven by the Clean Water Act and by our efforts to keep pollutants out. And this is really, I would say, a highlight of the City of Manhattan's program. We as a city over a decade or better have put a lot of effort into working with the development community on erosion and sediment control. It's a never-ending process, there's always, you know, new problems you can find. But, um, I've talked with folks who have been involved in this program for ten-plus years and it has made a big difference in the quality of the, of the, uh, work done on our subdivisions, the effort that's been put into it. What you're seeing more of going forward is not just what happens during construction, but what's included in subdivision plans to provide opportunities to soak up pollutants and control water post-construction. The requirement is kind of a mouthful, we keep trying to find a simpler term that makes more sense. Rain gardens is one that everyone can kind of visualize. There are lots of alternatives to a rain garden, but that's the idea. Is build landscaping or features into a subdivision that can actually proactively prevent pollution. The most visible one would be if you go up to the zoo with the parking lot remodel and you see how in the medians, the water actually, rather than just being directed into a box, actually runs through, uh, somewhat, what looks like a landscaping feature, it's actually stormwater treatment that's happening there. This is the area that's been the most difficult for us and most other cities to deal with and it's not a solved problem yet, so. I would expect over the next five years, we'll have other conversations as this program matures about challenges that we have and opportunities to make it better. But it is a, it is a mandate through the Clean Water Act that new developments do provide that. And not just provide it upfront, but that we have to pay attention to operation and maintenance and that's a big challenge. So on the, on the left-hand side is like a little technical example of what a rain garden is. It's basically a, a hole in the ground with some special media that really grows the plants and takes out the pollutants. On the right-hand side is some traditional erosion control. The lower ran, right-hand side is actually the KCU Alumni Gardens future, uh, site across from the university. That's a real success story this year, it was a demolition. Normally demolition kind of fell between the cracks because you didn't have the full final plans. The contractor, risk reduction and ourselves worked together to make sure, because there would be an unknown amount of time before they broke ground on the next phase, that we did a really good job of getting grass growing there and, and the contractor did a fantastic job. It actually looks much prettier and, and more stable than a lot of construction sites would be in that interim period. Among the other requirements, um, the good news is we, I, I'm not forecasting that we're going to bring, bringing ordinances to you in the next couple of years. A lot of the heavy lifting of getting those authorities on the books was done already, so now it's implementation of those. Uh, sampling and testing, we'll just continue to do what we've been doing. Frankly, stormwater is hard, it is so variable that it's really hard to see any trends, um, in all the noise of the data, so. It's, it's not like some other programs where I could come back and say, yep, we've proven a thirty percent reduction in something. But we are looking at the data to, to be aware of what's happening in our rivers and creeks. The TMDL requirements, as it actually stands under the permit, will primarily involve some additional public education outreach and some additional inspections of the system to meet our obligations there. This permit did change from the ones we've had in the past, it's more numeric. Uh, the state has actually created basically a point matrix in those, so there's very specific items that we go through and if we do them a certain way, we get so many points. Previous permits had been a little bit more narrative in nature, um, which, from a state and EPA perspective, I could understand had, they felt it was just a little too hard to actually measure whether you were making real commitments and following through. This is going to be much more of a yes-no, uh, type result. And so with that, I would ask if you have any questions or if you have any additional guidance you would like us to give in mind for future program activities.
I just wanted to ask one question on these dry weather outfall inspections. And you showed the Styrofoam cup there, but what I've noticed is, and we've had discussions with the city manager and Public Works on this, a lot of these locations get, uh, just full of tree limbs and things of that nature. And then, of course, that's going to collect trash, you know, you see that along Little Kitten Creek, uh, Wildcat Creek and places like that, so. Besides this inspecting, is there any ability to, to try to clean that up? Because not only is it a source of pollution when it collects all that trash that sticks in there, but it's also a source of flooding because it jams up the, you know, the outflow. Is, is that part of what you can do as part of this or?
Well, um, especially debris jams, I know that's kind of, you know, that's a difficult issue and has a lot connected to it, but the awareness that we have by being out there and actually inspecting these outfalls and looking at it has allowed us to see some other things that we can at least get on the radar screen. There's nothing in the permit that directly addresses some of those kinds of issues, but being aware of our system, um, is very important and, you know, in the past, we would just not even know about things until somebody called us, we're, we're much more proactive.
Okay, excellent. The other, other comment I was going to make, I know over the years I've used report-it and a couple of the others were, were just along Little Kitten Creek, uh, you know, the neighbors, there were some pipes and some problems with the, with the storm there and the reaction from the group was pretty quick. They were out there, you know, within twenty-four hours and, and, and took a look at it and fixed it, so, you know, my impression is it's working pretty well.
Good, good, glad to hear that.
Linda Morris, I have some questions. I was, I was thinking as Lynn was talking about the Marlot ditch and how it grows up, seems like for, but it's all mowed right now and I don't know, how often do you do that? Or do you do it or does the, who does it? That'd be the question.
Give me just a second.
That's a Rob question. I have more questions for you.
So, so some of the questions seem to be off-topic, but I'll answer that.
That one, yes.
The, the, you know, I'll certainly answer it. I mean, we, we certainly try and mow it at least twice a year.
Two, okay.
Um, you know, there's been a real reduction in labor from park and rec. You know, there's been a real reduction in labor from park and rec. You know, all that responsibility and I briefed you all on this, that responsibility is coming to Public Works. They used to always mow everything that was green, whether it was at the wellfields or the Marlott ditch, road right away. All those things are now coming to Public Works and are going to hit our utility funds. But answer specifically, we try and mow it at least twice a year.
Really? Okay. Well, it had some, what do you call it, elm saplings and things like that in it. I mean, that, that happens over the course of more than one year, but I understand. Thank you.
And, and keep asking your questions. I just want you all to understand that's kind of outside of what Bill is kind of briefing you all on tonight, which is the permit that we have to follow underneath KDHE. But keep going Commissioner, see what else I can answer for you.
Probably for Bill, I guess, because it involves this document, this spreadsheet. In four C, if the, how do you, let's see, it says, provide at least one training class for contractors, developers and others. I'm aware that when there are FEMA training courses, insurance agents don't go, they, they don't show up. And so I'm, that's my only frame of reference, but so how do you make the contractors even come? Or do you require one person from each contracting firm or how do you plan to enforce it?
Well, we haven't created a, like a mandatory attendance requirement yet. We have been doing for several years, a one-hour meeting once a year. And we buy supper, box lunches from somewhere. And that's remarkably good at getting attendance. I think we've had 30 last year and, and last year we actually widened the invitation list. Previously, it had been very builder-focused. Last year, we added some of the utility company and general contractors and had a really good conversation. So, as, as time goes on, there may be a level of encouragement that we want to create above and beyond that, but so far, it's been appreciated. And it, it's a two-way conversation. It's not just us saying what we think should be done. We've gotten an awful lot of feedback as well as to how, how it could be done easier for everyone, so.
So you're working on that communication?
Yes, and we will have one this year, obviously it'll be Zoom, which means we won't be buying supper, but we'll, we'll see how well that goes.
And on four D, it says, develop a site plan review process. And my question is, who will, who will oversee the site reviews? Is that you? Is, I mean, what department of the city?
So we actually already have this.
You do?
Program. The, the way this point system works is we don't want to claim all our points the first year, so we actually are ahead of the game in some of these areas. And it's a coordinated process through the risk reduction umbrella. So, right now, at the same time that we're getting plan sets in to look for water connection issues or sewer extension, we look at the erosion and sediment control plans. And it's one of my colleagues, Leon Brown, in Public Works that actually does most of those reviews.
Five A, five A speaks to sites over one acre. And my question is, what about sites under one acre?
Under the National EPA NPDS program, they are concerned with sites larger than one acre or, and this is very important, or smaller sites if they were part of a larger common plan of development. And what that actually means is that if you have a residential subdivision, even though the lots that you end up selling may be a third of an acre, because they started out as part of a larger tract of land and are part of a larger common plan, they don't get exempted once you plat and those become smaller. So, single-family residential, those kind of, those stay under having requirements all the way through. But if you were to just buy a half acre in the Ward District and wanted to undertake a project at the EPA national level and at the KDHE permit level, they're not telling us that we have to have any special requirement. We could always choose to go above and beyond and this is in the water quality realm. This has nothing to do with whether or not we require detention or the other, the other things, but we're not mandated to, to regulate those sites for water quality.
And Bill, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Commissioner, risk reduction is part of the plan, some of it, even, even for a single-family house that Bill kind of described. There's a plan sheet that has to have erosion measures shown on it. So, I believe that's even, I mean, that's today.
Okay. Thank you.
I will add one more thing. We've been having great conversations with risk reduction and for some things like single-family residential, they would like us to work on putting together like a simpler cheat sheet, you know, a one-page template so that not quite so much time has to be spent figuring out what to do, but it's just much easier to implement in the field. So, those are the kinds of incremental little improvements, adding tools to the toolbox that we are constantly working on.
On six A, it says that the city in, wait a minute, six A. Guidance shall require any municipal staff to have commercial applicator certification if they are applying pesticides. But yet, a contractor is mentioned here too. Is that a third or a third-party contractor? Would that apply to them having that certification also?
I, I believe that is the way it's applied. Most of that is led by our Parks Department, so we've been having a conversation about that. But having that type of special certification, if you're going to apply some of the commercial grade pesticides, is, is what our, what our level of service is, so.
I've, I noticed that in my neighborhood at least, when there were sewer boxes, box drains, they had a little sticker on them that said, only rain, don't put anything else down it, don't dump. And I don't see that in here. I, I see that you were talking about putting door hangers. And then it says, or similar documents. And I don't know if you still do that, you may not do it anymore, but they were very durable and lasted years. And I don't know if that's still one of your remedie, you know, one of the things you would want to do to, but it, it is a reminder.
I think you're right Commissioner. When I first, 15 years ago, when I started, we used to hire interns and we retrofitted a lot of storm boxes with a, oh, a laminated seal and a, I don't want to say hot glue, but it was kind of super glued down. I believe we changed our standards on our storm inlets, so now that the actual manhole access lid has that already casted into the ring.
Okay.
That way it's far more durable.
Sure.
But you're certainly right, there's definitely hundreds if not thousands of older storm boxes out there. But that's how we've addressed it going forward because it was a more sustainable cast that would last longer.
Sounds like a better long-term plan anyway.
That's right.
It takes a while to ever wear one out.
Yeah. It's, it's iron.
What was six E? Let me look at six E.
That was a little before Bill's time here. That was, that was some of the early stages in, in the program where we were just trying to get started and be in compliance and keep our friends in Topeka happy.
I don't have any more questions. I, I, I'm pleased with your responses and I think it is a good, we've reviewed it pretty thoroughly and certainly I know you all have, so.
I'll add one more thing, just commending the, Rob and the folks that developed this program over many years. The city was audited by KDHE in, I believe, 2017 and we did quite well with that audit. I, I know of other cities that were audited that had much bigger list of things to do better next time, but the City of Manhattan did well on, and so that's a program that we want to continue.
I did look up the reported numbers, this is Jared over here. And we did receive 25 stormwater reports through the app in the year 2020. Most of those were from around April to September, which is common.
Is there a trend do you see? Is it going higher as far as, that doesn't mean there's more problems, that just that more people are using it is what, what I'm looking for, if there's any kind of trends?
Yeah, we started the app back in 2017, so I could look to see if there's been some increases or decreases in that. A lot of it really just depends on the exposure to more people to the app. We have continually more people downloading the app and looking at all the various ways that you can report issues. So, a lot of it could be instead of, which is the whole intent, less phone calls and more reports online, which we weren't really tracking phone calls prior to that.
Okay.
Commissioner, I'll tell you that the street department, the pothole component of the app is working extremely well and has been for a number of years.
Yeah, I'm sure. I don't know if people know that about for stormwater systems.
They're, they're very proficient at, at filling out that form and getting it in.
Speed, speed dial there.
But, but it, and I will tell you though, it is nice because I haven't, I haven't had the time for 2020 yet, but in the past, because it has a geolocator component to it, you can plot all the points where potholes have been reported, the same thing with stormwater. You can actually on the ArcGIS, plot those points up and stuff. And I've done that before, it's been probably two years since I've had time, but, but.
It gives a idea.
It gives you a heat map if, if nothing else.
Very good. So Bill, I'm not quite done with you yet. Sorry about that. This is Commissioner Ready. I, oh, you know, before I ask my questions, one of my primary questions is, we referenced point system. Can you tell me a little bit more about that point system? Is it like 100 points and then they look at each of these? Because then you said, well, we don't want to get all the points in the first year or the second year. So I'm a little confused about the point system and I'm glad they're using a metric system so that we can kind of gauge, you know, what we need to do better, what we need to aim for, or where we're doing terrific or something like that. Tell me a little bit more about the point system they're implementing with this program.
Sure. So each of those six program areas has an individual number of points that you have to achieve in each six areas. And the point level is a certain level for the, for the next two years, so 2021 and 2022. And then the last two years, all of them tend to bump up a couple of points. So for example, and I'm just going from memory, I think under public education, we need to get four points next, in 21, four points in 22, and then it bumps up to I think six points in, in 2022. And so, something like having our permit and information on the website is worth a point. However, they also wrote this as if we weren't, if we weren't really as far along as we are in some measures and it's the first year we're implementing something, a lot of them give a bonus point because of the idea that you do a lot of work up front. When you have a program like we have that's already off and running, it actually makes it look kind of funny, like you would get a bunch of points the very first year. We're not going to not do something because we don't need the points yet, but in terms of actually writing the plan, we don't want to get ourselves in kind of a backward situation where we way over-committed on some things and then get locked in. So, we phased the, the implementation plan out so that we could ramp up a little bit on things each year, but some of these we're already going to be exceeding right from the beginning and that's fine. We're not going to not do something that is worthwhile just because we don't yet claim full points for them.
I think that's, that's good for me to understand so that as you report next time, once this is out in February, maybe next February, we can see things that we, that they've checked off and things that we implemented that are new and where we still need to go. I think that's a great idea because I, I don't see those, those, I think the teacher in me comes out when I see a point system of some kind to measure as if we're going in the right direction. I think there's a lot of things that we do well that are often not, that the public doesn't know because it's stormwater or it's something that's just not out there for them to see. But because we do it so well and there aren't any problems, they don't understand why it's working so well. So, mine are going to be kind of sporadic questions. On the public engagement piece, I don't know how much we, I think we've tried in the past to engage with students or rental property owners and maybe even international families and students on how to dispose of oils or certain things in their kitchen, whatever it might be that they're not accustomed to doing because somebody always did it or it was done differently in their country or in their state. And so I hope we do a little bit more of that with our students, whether it's with the K-State housing or with landlords. If we can do a few more, even like short videos or a one-pager that goes out so that they're aware of it, because most of them might just dump things into the sink and not even know they shouldn't be dumping things into the sink. So that's something that maybe we can do a little bit more of. The street sweeper, I think on six B or something, it says we do, is it, they're asking that we just sweep 10% or, I don't remember what it was. I don't know how much we use our street sweeper. It says at least 10% of the streets must be swept at least once a year.
Right. And so that, that is a fairly low bar compared to what our program already is, so we will meet that one with flying colors and we will continue to actually sweep our streets at the frequency that we have always done.
Yeah, and I just want to know what that frequency was. Do you know what percentage we do to sweep our streets?
I'll make sure I don't misspeak here.
So, you've seen the maps for a spring cleanup? We have the five different quadrants. So, I'd have to ask, I know we put in the monthly report and the annual report how many blocks we sweep, but we get to all the streets in, in the entire city. How many rotations we make a year kind of depends on weather and frankly, just maintenance breakdowns and stuff of the equipment. But we do get to all the streets at least once.
Okay.
If not, possibly, I'll have to ask if it's three to five times perhaps? And, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to, there certainly are more mature subdivisions. The Ward Districts are our biggest headache, especially in the fall. And then as you go around the community, there's, there's other subdivisions, the Amherst, Miller Parkways. But then you have like the Brookville and, and Stonehavens, those trees are not as mature. So it doesn't take as long to sweep those subdivisions and so on and so forth as you go around the community as, as it was developed and maturity of the trees and so forth. But we do hit all the streets at least once.
That's good to know.
Yeah, I see them on, you know, Windsong's got three or four, you know, storm drains that run into Little Kitten Creek, which runs into Wildcat. And I see that street sweeper guy there at least four times a year.
Yeah.
Because lots of leaves fall there and, you know, he gets them. Sometimes I get them with my lawnmower to put on my garden and help him out, but, but they're there regular, you know, regular.
And that's, I think that's something we don't promote ourselves, things that we do well, because I don't think that's something people know. And it does take that huge vehicle I saw in facilities. So, people don't know about those things that you already do that they're saying 10% is good enough when we actually do much.
We do quite a bit more. We have, we have three street sweepers. You all were kind enough a couple of years ago to authorize a third street sweeper for a very long time. We kept, we only had two. And we only keep them for five years and, and I know that some commissioners of the past were critical of that, but I will tell you, my mechanics are very thankful for that because the operational readiness rate or, or how many days per month those vehicles are, are available for usage is much higher than newer the vehicle. It's a dirty process, it's mechanical, dirt, grime, things break, get jammed up. So, you know, you all have been supportive in the past of that program, allowed us to replace those street sweepers in a, in a five-year cycle. And frankly, I, I think we, we do do a good job because we do get to the streets a lot more.
Yeah, I think our shitty, city should have a lot of pride in that, I think. Last question, a comment maybe. On two B, it says have public volunteers for street cleanups and such. I know the morning rotary does the trail, linear trail cleanup here, but I know a lot of organizations that always sign up for those. Do you have an idea about how many community organizations already sign up to do that right now? I know we have more than just one, or I don't even know if we keep track of them.
I don't, but we can find out. I don't, but we can find out and get that answer back.
Because that's one way to utilize them, like you said, like those styrofoam cups that you see every now and then, and there's always community organizations looking for projects to do and volunteer in our community. So if you email a blast or put out a social media thing, hey, we need these things cleaned up, would your organization like to help clean up? I think you would have a lot of people jumping on that, because there are a lot of people that want to do good things in our community for their organizations, and this could be one of those, would be productive for everybody involved and make our city beautiful, so. Thank you for all your work, you did an outstanding job.
You know, getting back to that, I, and this goes back to Commissioner Morris's comment, I think we actually had the honor society of civil engineers at one time put those labels down, because some of the students needed a number of hours of community service. Now that I think about it, I think we might have had an honor society from K-State at one time help put those labels down, so.
Yeah, I think we have, like I said, a good community who would like to see, who would like to participate more on that same level, so feel free to reach out to them. I think there's a lot of good things happening, especially for the volunteering and the cleanup sites, so.
Bill, this is Commissioner Dr. Brook. I just wanted to say thank you for getting us through the, the compliance of K D H E. And one quick comment to maybe the city manager's office is, this, this type of, the, the, everything we just heard, the highlights, that we're doing more than necessary, all of that would be kind of what I would hope would eventually end up being on our website under some kind of resiliency or climate, those type of things that you can highlight, and as Commissioner Ready just talked about, people in the community can find ways to, to go clean up something. We just don't do a good job about that. It's not easy to find, on parks or rec, it's not easy to find some of the pollinator stuff they're doing. It's there now, but we fold that all in under energy-saving, climate, resiliency, whatever word you want to use, it's all kind of connected, and a lot of other cities do that and advertise that, and we don't, and we should, because, Bill, you're doing a good job.
Okay, I think that was a great update. I think we understand the plan, got a good plan there. So I think we're good to go. If there's nothing else, we can end the meeting and move out of here a little bit quick tonight. So at that point, I think we'll just adjourn. Thank you.